Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to welcome you to the 5:15 meeting and call this meeting to order, the regular City Council meeting of February 8th, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we have the pleasure of having Father Larry from our Lady of Guadalupe to order, to offer the invocation, which just at the school celebrating Catholic Schools Week, and congratulations on your school's 100th anniversary. Following the invocation, yeah, give it up for the school, 100 years. Following the invocation, Sammy Wells, who's a senior at Centennial High School, will lead us in the pledge. He is representing the "We the People" team, which won the regional competition and finished third in the state, and the Mock Trial team, which won the county competition and is preparing to compete at the state level next month. Father Larry, let's all stand, please.
Lord God, we belong to you, and we are called to serve you and each other. Help us to glorify you this evening in all the thoughts of our hearts, and all the words of our lips, and all the works of our hands, where we are your servants. Grant us the grace, O loving God, to desire what is pleasing to you, to examine it prudently, to acknowledge it truthfully, and to accomplish it well for your honor and glory, and for the well-being of all the residents of our city. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through you authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Your God, we thank you for the role which you call each of us to fulfill in maintaining a society that is just, peaceful, and respectful. We thank you for volunteers, such as the retirees' pickup group. We thank you for the leaders called to share in governing us in society with an authority that derives from your divine authority over all. During the Safe Surrender Baby Awareness Month, we pray that all babies from the earliest moment of their existence, and all mothers, be appreciated, loved, and cared for. In our complicated world, in our difficult state, grace our mayor and council members with your powerful protection to discharge their duties with honesty and ability. Grant them health, peace, concord, and stability, that they may fulfill wisely and prudently the tasks assigned to them. Direct them and all public contributors to tonight's meeting in a manner that honors you and serves well the individual needs and the common good of the people of Bakersfield through all the ordinances, resolutions, agreements, and hearings on this evening's agenda and always. May all residents affected benefit from the outcome and cooperate together in peace for the true well-being of all involved. We offer this prayer, Lord, with trust in your providence and mercy, for you are our God, Father, forever and ever. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Sammy.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sammy. Thank you, Father, and you may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos, and for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, or prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in the expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts this meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, Proclamation declaring Safe Surrendered Baby Awareness Month in Bakersfield during February 2023.
It's a pleasure to be joined this evening by Janice Legel of the Kern County Department of Human Services, Amy Travis, Executive Director of First Five Kern, and also Erin Rogers, oh, and our chief, Erin Rogers, of the Bakersfield Pregnancy Center, and our own chief. We have the honor of working together to save lives. The Safely Surrendered Baby Law was first enacted in 2001. This law helps to decrease the number of newborns and infant deaths statewide due to the abandonment of infants in unsafe locations. Thanks to this coalition for its dedicated efforts to increase public awareness about the safely surrender baby law and help give parents a safe option in surrendering their babies. So it's my honor to read this proclamation. The mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California, has officially proclaimed February 2023 as Safely Surrendered Baby Awareness Month in our city. In recognition of the Safely Surrendered Baby Coalition and its efforts to provide a safe alternative for newborn babies to be safely surrendered, in recognition of the partnership of government nonprofit organizations, private businesses, and residents that are committed to providing places of sanctuary for these babies, in recognition of the need to heighten public awareness regarding this issue and the need to provide a safe refuge for the innocent newborns, the innocent lives involved, in recognition of the five infants safely surrendered in 2022, and in recognition of the 95 precious infants safely surrendered since the program's inception in Kern County in 2006, and this is dated this day, February 8th, 2023, and it's my honor to bill and present this to the coalition. Shannon, will you be receiving it? Ms. Legel.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Go, and members of the City Council for letting us come here tonight and for proclaiming February's Safely Surrender Month. As Mayor Go said, in 2021, there were five babies safely surrendered, and one was reclaimed. So the law does allow a person to come back within 14 days to reclaim the baby, and if that happens, we get involved as a department. I work for the Department of Human Services, and we make sure that mama has all that she needs. I was talking to someone today about this law, and they were kind of confused as to how it worked, and I would, Erin, who is with the Bakersfield Pregnancy Center, had a brief story to share with you, just to give a little more understanding of what people in that situation might go through. Erin?
So at the Bakersfield Pregnancy Center, we serve women who are making decisions regarding their pregnancy, and we had a client who came in several years ago and was a little further on in her pregnancy and felt trapped. She did not want to parent this baby. When we offered her an adoption plan, that, you know, there were many different adoption agencies she could choose to make a plan for her baby. Her reaction was, no, I don't want social workers, I don't want people checking on my house, I don't want that, I don't want people in my business. And our volunteer, who had been trained with using the safely surrendered information that we have, said, well, have you ever heard of safe surrender? And began to tell her that she could safely surrender her baby at any hospital or fire station, no names would ever be taken, she wouldn't have to go through an adoption or any type of court process, and her countenance changed. She, you could see the relief on her face, she left smiling, she took the information. We have no idea what decision she made, but at least she knew she had another option, and that's what's super important about this information.
Thank you, Erin, and thank you again. This is just an important law for women to know that it's an option, and it's a really good option, so thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Presentations, item 4B, Certificate of Recognition Presented to the Retirees Pickup Group for Its 10 Years of Volunteer Service to the City of Bakersfield's Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee.
Well, we have a whole host of people joining us here, and can you imagine, in your retirement, choosing to serve to pick up other people's trash every week? So Tom Birch and the retirees' pickup group, you have been so dedicated. The group estimates that they have picked up trash at least 40 times per year, averaging 30 bags per pickup, with a total estimate of 30,000 pounds per year. That's 30,000 pounds of other people's trash left there that these retirees have faithfully picked up. And so it's my honor to present this certificate of recognition to the retirees' pickup group in honor of your dedicated service to the City of Bakersfield, in recognition of your continued commitment to improving our city one cleanup at a time, and in recognition of your outstanding efforts to support and partner with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful and make a positive difference in our city. Congratulations, thank you so much. Tom, you've been the leader of this group for a long time, it's my honor to present this to you, and to all of you, thank you very much.
You know, it's really amazing, we get a tremendous amount of support from the city, from Caltrans, and from Kern County Solid Waste, but, you know, when you start looking around, I mean, today, we were on the north end of Morning Drive and got about 30 bags and three couches and two chairs, and, you know, I mean, it just is ongoing, and we couldn't do it without the support from the city of picking all this stuff up after we get it stacked up, so, thank you very much, we appreciate the honor.
Thank you so much. Let's pause and take a picture, because you've been doing this.
Around the other side. Yeah, there you go. Short people, you know. The little ones in the front.
Public Statements.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed to be speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you're hearing, if you're here on Hearing Items 9A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer the matter to committee or request that staff contact you. And so thank you all again for participating. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda.
Do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have received seven public speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda. We have also received a staff memorandum transmitting correspondence for items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Lisa Smith.
Thank you, and as Ms. Smith's coming up, I just wanted to acknowledge that Senator Otato's office is here, represented by Janet. Thank you so much, we always appreciate the engagement of our legislative team. Welcome, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Smith, I'm a county resident living near the Stockdale-Trip construction site. I originally started calling the city last summer, asking for help with graffiti and tagging on the site. I was frustrated with what my neighborhood was becoming, then there were four shootings in the area before we hit Christmas. I eventually ended up before you on January 11th, asking for a fence. You see, I was unable to figure out why, in the city's monitored construction site in Mr. Gonzalez's second ward, consisting of a major overhead freeway construction, was wide open to a neighborhood with two churches, a major health facility, an elementary school, and 1,000 residents. I was finally able to meet with the city manager's office, Public Works, and the trip supervisor to ask that very question. Since that meeting, all of staff and these groups are trying to figure out how to secure the site, to stop the vandalism, keep kids from playing on and cutting through the construction debris, and keep homeless people from camping on it. I just found out an hour ago that the city has issued a stop-work order on the site. It's that severe. I need to ask you to consider two things. One thing is, I know what happened. This site operated for two years without a fence and not even one no trespassing sign. For two years. And for six months, I made phone calls to the city, and no one knew where to direct my concerns. That bothers me. I know what happened, I don't know why. I'd like to find out why, I think you would be interested in finding out why as well. The second thing is, this is happening on the site, that's Stockdale South. What about Stockdale North? What about the other miles of construction you have that this contractor is operating? Is it all so fenced with children playing in it? I'm a teacher, I'm worried. You should be too, because you knew or should have known that a dangerous condition exists on property you are overseeing. I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, for your comments. Staff I know has been working on this issue, and I thank them for that. Mr. Clegg, Mr. Helen, if you want to provide a quick update to the full council, I'd appreciate Mr. Helen, thank you.
Not a problem. We, we did meet with Ms. Smith, and we've had several phone calls since then. We also have our trip staff that is working with security paving, which did issue the stop, stop-work order, so, essentially, that is, that they are to repair all these fences, get all the temporary fences up, so that all these sites are secure, so that is to be done by Friday, and then if not, then Monday we'll, we'll officially stop the work. So we'll continue to meet with Ms. Smith until we resolve all of her concerns.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Helen.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Followed by Jason LaForge.
Welcome, Ms. Claus. Can you get closer to the microphone, please? There, that's good.
Hi, my name is Maya Claus, I'm an arrow, like, hob scout, and I'm talking to, who today is part of my conservation project. Having chicken was all...
It's okay, just keep going.
Having chickens was a lot of fun, but they also had a very good impact on our, on the environment and our backyard. There were more wild birds in our yard when we had chickens. They dug up pests with their claws and they eat weeds. They turned kitchen scraps into compost. When we had kitchen, when we had chickens, we had eggs in our backyard, so we didn't have to buy eggs at the store that came from hundreds of miles away. This was better for the environment, because our backyard eggs didn't take any fossil fuel to get to us. Lastly, I would like to tell you a joke. Why are chickens so cute? Because, I mean, I can't speak right now. Ah!
It's okay.
Because? Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. It's not so easy to get up here, but thank you for sharing with us. Next speaker, please.
Jason LaForge, followed by Sharon Bril.
Quite sure how I follow that. Outstanding performance.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Jason LaForge, and I have responsibility for the southern half of the United States for L3 Harris Technologies, Public Safety Division, and I'm based out of Oklahoma City. I also have Rob Nelson, our Strategic Account Manager, who's based here in California with me this evening. We are here today to confirm delivery of our correspondence that was emailed earlier today outlining our concerns regarding the competitive bid process for your public safety radio system. We delivered the same letter to the Kern County Supervisors yesterday. Several points that are in the letter include lack of transparency in the process, that jeopardizes the integrity of the process. It has been communicated that the standard format of award debrief negotiations would occur. It is our understanding that the county and city are in negotiations with the vendor before the award has even been made. Very little to no information provided from the open records request. We did learn that Bakersfield sole sourced over $1.8 million in radios from the other responder of the RFP at exceptionally high pricing. It also touches on the previous protest submitted to this board by another radio communications provider and local business owner here in Bakersfield about favoritism and bias possibly being in the process. We are requesting again for the City of Bakersfield to provide the detailed information regarding how the county and city arrived to negotiate the contract before award. This would include information regarding the RFP scoring, pricing, and any communications, including email and texts, regarded to this project or any radio-related items since this project has started. Since this communication system will be one of the largest procurements in the history for the city and county, it is incumbent that your council scrutinizes every aspect of this RFP process for the taxpayers and the public safety end-users. Full transparency in the light of day is always better than operating in the dark. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaForge. Next speaker, please.
Sharon Bril, followed by Dennis Fox.
Welcome, Bril.
Hi. My purpose today is to give you an update, a report from the Kern River Parkway. In the past three years, I've ridden my bike 4,500 miles, with majority from CSUB to Enos Lane. I see regularly road runners, quail, bobcat, coyotes, and many hares. To my delight, last week, the lake at River Rock was filled to the top. Many fishermen, children playing in the stream bed, and families, couples, and singles staring in amazement at the water in the Kern River. I depend on all of you to protect the Kern River water. I need you to value recreation for the citizens as much as you value the money generated by the sale of water to your budget. You need to ensure recreation is not lost due to the failure to establish and enforce water conservation policies and practices. Sierra Club Kern Coia Chapter has sent you correspondence on conservation issues in the past, but have not yet received a reply from the mayor, council members, or the city administration. I can only deduct from your silence on water conservation issues that the sale of water is more important than recreation for citizens. Please prove me wrong by establishing a committee with the city water department, parks and wrecks, and public works, and citizens to work out the policies and procedures that will protect the Kern River and its water. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bril. Next speaker, please.
Dennis Fox, followed by Tommy Tillary, followed by Eddie Lane.
Welcome, Mr. Fox.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm gonna try and make it. I'm Dennis Fox. Today, I attended a virtual meeting for the fishing game. I noticed you had a meeting about it. They meet also tomorrow at 8:30. They answer questions, and they are the people you might want to talk to. The, I gave the phone number to the clerk for the virtual meeting, you know, you call him on the Zoom. The other thing is, is that they're looking for a place to hold a meeting. By law, they meet around the state six times a year, and it's between Fresno and Bakersfield for a meeting place in April. Hey, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Next speaker, please.
Tommy Tillary, followed by Eddie Lane.
Welcome.
I'm Tommy Tillary, I'm 63 years old, and I live in East Bakersfield, in the country section, East Bakersfield, out here, and I'm having a problem understanding the time it takes for elders to get seen when they call the police. I called the Sheriff's Department three times for Linda Riddick, she stayed at 4110 Pioneer, and she had dementia. And I spent two and a half days trying to get somebody to come and see about her, but they said I had to do this and do that. I hesitated calling the 911 first, because I ran into a couple of officers, and they're good officers, I'm not saying anything bad about the Sheriff's Department. It's just the response, the respond time. Me, myself, I've been a victim of elder abuse since January 4th of this year, okay? I'm currently locked out of my facility, I have no heat, and the electrical box has been taken out of the house by a family member, and because of this, I went down and did all the paperwork and stuff, and I got nothing out of it, but, well, we'll see you on the 15th of this month for a hearing. I don't get it. I don't get it. I'm being abused. I'm sleeping in the garage, okay? With no electricity, no heat, at this moment, as we speak. And I was hoping I could get some kind of help from somebody.
Thank you, Mr. Tillery. You're out of time, but can we ask staff just to follow up with him? Thank you. So, Mr. Clegg, we'll find somebody to follow up with you now. Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
I was just going to make the same request, that staff work with Mr. Tillery. And, Mr. Tillery, I'm so sorry to hear about your experiences. It is concerning, but if staff would reach out to him and ask our community relations specialist through BPD to make a connection with the Kern County Sheriff's Department, and also if we can make a connection with Kern County Aging and Adult Services. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Eddie Lane. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Many of the hills around us now look as if we're in Ireland. However, long-term environmental issues remain, such as the need for water conservation practices and planning to protect city-owned Kern River water for public enjoyment, as in the two small lakes in the park at Riverwalk. I've handed you, actually, the clerk has, thank you, copies of a letter authorized by our executive committee last Saturday, which outlines a series of questions which have been asked during previous letters, council meetings, and meetings with and communications with city staff. The Sierra Club is requesting that these issues be addressed. The first issue relates to the commitments made last August to develop formal collaboration between three city departments responsible for aspects of the management of the Kern River Parkway. The protection of, and when possible, the restoration of, the Parkway is an issue of tremendous public concern. With regard to water conservation, let's be honest, water conservation isn't always popular, nor is paying water bills, but both are common sense propositions. As noted, the city's Recreation and Parks Department is moving ahead with water conservation practices. However, major questions remain about the lack of parallel practices upriver regarding the use of city-owned water by the Kern River Golf Course and the County of Kern. And unaddressed are questions regarding the privately managed Kern River Golf Course and the county paying their fair share of city-owned river water like regular users. Water metering commitments made years ago need to be honored with corresponding reasonable payment for water used instead of the seeming freebies that currently exist. Water is a precious asset, even when abundant. The Sierra Club is asking your help on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Madam Clerk, any other items? Madam Clerk? Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 7A through 7X for approval.
Vice Mayor.
Do any council members wish to recuse themselves from an item on the consent calendar? Do any council members wish to pull an item from the consent calendar for separate consideration? I have one request from Councilmember Gray to pull item W, 7W, from the consent calendar. With that, I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar items 7A through 7X, with the exception of W.
Thank you for the motion. Motion is unanimously approved. Thank you. And now, Councilmember Gray. Item W.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, so many times, we only talk about the things that we're unhappy about, and we don't talk about the things we're happy about. So I just wanted to give a shout out to our Public Works Director, Mr. Strakoulis, on a good job done on this Kaiser Permanente, that you all didn't accept the bids that came in, that you're looking for ways to cut some costs. And I appreciate that because, as you know, I'm always thinking about the taxpayer, and I appreciate that you didn't say, "Well, this is our only opportunity. Let's move forward," when in fact, there's ways that maybe you can cut costs and redesign. So, thank you. I just wanted to give a shout out for you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray, and it was a team effort all around.
Great. So I'll make a motion to accept the item W.
If you have a motion, please cast your votes. Ms. Marin.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Hearings.
Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you've written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public hearing item 9A. Public hearing to consider general plan amendment, zone change, plan development review, number 22-0122, on 11.3 acres located at 9407 South H Street. Applicant is Americo Real Estate Company, representing the property owner, Nelson Family Trust. One, resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration per California Environmental Quality Act. Two, resolution approving a planned development review to allow development of a truck rental and self-storage facility, U-Haul. Three, resolution approving an amendment of the land use designation of the Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan from suburban residential to general commercial. Four, first reading of ordinance amending the Bakersfield Municipal Code, Section 17.06.020, by changing the official zoning map from agriculture to regional commercial, planned commercial development.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor Go and Council. Our Development Services Director, Chris Boyle, has a brief presentation on this topic.
Mayor Go, I apologize. I also want to announce we received a staff memorandum correcting a typographical error.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Tonight's public hearing is really, as noted by the city clerk, a four-step approval process: a general plan amendment, zone change, plan development review, and environmental certification. Case is located on South H Street, about a quarter mile north of the traffic highway. It's an 11.23 acre undeveloped parcel. For the general plan amendment, the request is from suburban residential to general commercial. And for the zone change, the request is from agriculture to regional commercial, planned commercial development. The planned development review would provide for U-Haul facility, which would provide employment for 15 employees. Two storage buildings with truck rental supplies are a component of the design overall. Here's an example of the graphic of the elevations that are proposed as part of this project. I would note, too, that staff sent this back to the applicant some time ago and asked for the truck repair facility to be relocated to an alternative site, and the applicant agreed to that design change. So we have very much a commercial look and feel to the site. As noted by the city clerk, there are four actions tonight: two resolutions, three resolutions, and the first reading of an ordinance. The planning commission recommended approval unanimously. Therefore, staff and the planning commission act for favorable, request favorable action. That completes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. At this time, item 9A is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor? Or Councilmember Cord? Did you wish to? Oh, okay.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend adoption of the resolution and first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. If you have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
New business item 12A. Fiscal year 2022-23, mid-year budget recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, it is that time of year again for our mid-year considerations. I would note, as we're pulling up the presentation, that our mid-year process in recent years has considered significant funding. That's not historically always been the case. Typically, we try and keep mid-year a little simpler, but we've been fortunate to have notable one-time funds to allocate towards council priorities. This year, there are funds for consideration, which is good news, but we are recommending a fairly conservative approach to not fully allocate those funds and allocate a number of funds to next year's fiscal year as a contingency so that we create a safe cushion, given the potential recessionary impacts that we're forecasting. But with that, let me jump in. So, most of our revenue streams, the good news is, are meeting or exceeding our budget estimates. That's true for property tax, transient occupancy tax, and our Bradley Burns tax. We did have conservative estimates for all of our revenues. Unfortunately, we have seen recent projections from our sales tax consultants that suggest that our Public Safety Vital Services tax will likely bring in less revenues than our initially conservative estimates. Because of, again, these notable one-time monies, notable fund balance, we do believe that we'll be in a position to address, without any challenges, this reduction in revenues because of these one-time funds, and we'll watch very closely our revenue projections for the coming fiscal year as we go into that budget process. So, again, the revenues that we're talking about, or fund balance that we're talking about right now, is for last fiscal year, not the current fiscal year. As we closed our books through August and then audited our financials through independent financial review, we've now determined what our ending year-end fund balances are. The experience is that revenue did exceed our estimates from last year, as well as some of our final expenditures were under budget. I would note that that amount of expenditures under budget two years ago was larger, but as we've staffed up and as we've spent our funds, that gap has closed. But we have still had some vacancy savings, in particular, in a last fiscal year, along with additional revenues that generated these year-end fund balances. I think it's worth noting that typically, there are certain expenditures that are anticipated and/or carry forward a fund balance that's anticipated into each new fiscal year, and that has been taken into account before sharing what the available funds are for this year-end fund balance. And so, there are $6 million in the general fund of available funds, one-time year-end fund balances, and $19 million in Public Safety Vital Services tax. Again, the good news about this amount of $19 million is that we can activate the reserve policy adopted by the city council, which is to take 25% of that year-end balance and to put it into the pension trust fund. And so, that's not a recommendation that you're seeing as part of the itemized list of items tonight, because it's assumed that we'll follow that council policy, and given the opportunity to do so, we would at mid-year allocate that 25% of that $19 million into our pension trust fund, and same for our general fund revenues. Beyond that, so what are we recommending? Of course, anything that we do at mid-year, we think should be very strategic. We don't need to have a long list of items. We are, and we'll get into that list momentarily, we are recommending a new position be authorized to be a dedicated code enforcement officer to illegal dumping, but it does not require a funding allocation because we have existing resources. We have a state grant for tile removal, as well as revenues from the new county illegal dumping fee from the landfill that we're recommending we allocate to this position to get at the issue of illegal dumping. We're not recommending other appropriations for general fund or enterprise funds. And again, as I noted, beyond this list that I'll share in a moment, we're recommending the remaining dollars be carried forward under both the general fund in particular, as well as the Public Safety Vital Services tax be carried forward into next year. So, in the strategic programs, we have a number of items. I'm actually going to move down to an item on the list first, and probably realize if I wanted to talk about it first, I should have put it first on the list, but next time. $1.6 million, in addition to allocating funds into the pension trust fund. In order to keep up with our two months' working cash reserve, because our budgeted revenues for this current fiscal year are higher than they were last fiscal year, it does require us to raise that, just the total amount in our reserves slightly, and that's that $1.6 million. Will keep us at that two-month reserve mark that is also by council policy, and so strongly recommend that we add those dollars to the reserves. We have a few items that I'll actually address that are not homelessness-related, and I'm going to do that first because really, our focus was to respond to this priority issue of homelessness in what we discussed in our October workshop on that topic. But, a couple items that are outside of that, our animal shelter operating budgets have also been under notable pressure, and a renegotiation with our contractor, the SPCA, who's running that shelter, we determined we needed some additional operating funds, and this would help to address some of those acute needs at the shelter and address some additional capital needs that are there. Also, we established that Park Amenities and Renovation Improvements Fund in this fiscal year. We actually had $500,000 in that fund, and what that does is allows our Parks and Recreation Department to make smaller capital investments and renovations as a bathroom perhaps gets vandalized. Unfortunately, that's all too frequent the case, or maybe there's fire damage to one of our playground structures. Also, we, you know, maybe there's an opportunity or a need to add some trash receptacles or picnic tables. And in particular, this year, as we started our park ranger program, we installed gates at many of our parks that have internal parking lots that could be opened and closed every evening and morning by the park rangers. And so, they've spent through that initial allocation fairly quickly and feel like this will allow us to continue to make really important amenity improvements in our parks that come at a fairly low cost, but a high return on that investment, and we're recommending some additional dollars this year as we've largely expended that pot already. And then, lastly, we do have an obligation with our police training center to pay back the TRIP program for that purchase of that building. We've been making that in installments over time. Frankly, this is not required to happen at this time, but is something that we've done in previous years at mid-year because of those one-time allocations that allow us to match that obligation. Switching gears from those, few... Switching gears from those few topics, the rest are really in response to homelessness and our challenges there. And so, the private security services that we actually took action on, and this was us trying to move really quickly and not get too far ahead of council, but we actually took action on an item on that last meeting, but this would be the funding to fully fund that through this next year. Also, the family reunification or Project Homebound, that's $300,000 for that program to expand that significantly, to reconnect individuals experiencing homelessness with their families and out of region. We contemplated adding additional Clean City teams. We actually feel like we can add a team or two from existing resources under our Clean City Initiative, but we want to get all of our teams working on one common platform, and so we need additional resources to purchase software licensing to help everybody use one system to have really good data all in one place, and to frankly have our teams be more efficient in deploying to response to encampments. The biggest ticket item on this list is additional funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, $2.6 million. We received a state grant for our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and this matches that grant. There is a one-to-one match required, but the great news about this is it's another $5 million total between our money and the state monies to address affordable housing needs. The shopping cart ordinance, we did set aside funds, but through existing resources, EOA program, ARPA program, and existing economic development incentive dollars to try and address the incentive program created out of the homeless ad hoc committee last year for the shopping cart ordinance. We have already established that ordinance, we've made a commitment on that incentive, but rather than deplete our EOA programs and ARPA programs, the thought was to take some one-time monies, to set them aside for those that may request those reimbursements for that program, again, instead of taking out of the existing programs. It could work, but this way simplifies the reimbursement process and preserves those other funding streams. So, again, when you look at $7 million, that's a large investment. 1.6 of that is to our reserves, and the majority of the remaining $6 million is towards homelessness with a few exceptions. And I walked through that. This is just a visual representation that helps get a picture of how we've divided up those funds and our priorities. I talked about this earlier, but this is just a more specific breakdown of the costs for that one new authorized position and being able to pull from existing resources. No new budget allocation requested. Lastly, there is some good news that we're not spending money or asking for money, but receiving money, and so, unsolicited, the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund, because we were previously awarded a grant for the Kaiser Permanente Sports Village of $3 million, they approached the city, they had additional grant funds, and are allocating an additional $1.3 million to the city for that project, and this just means we need to appropriate those dollars as part of the mid-year action to accept those funds. We do have our meetings with our Oversight Committee scheduled in coming weeks to address this same list of oversight topics, but wanted to have this information in front of council first. And really, what we're asking for tonight is feedback, recommendations, in advance of presenting topics to the Oversight Committee, and then ultimately, we would look for adoption of the mid-year budget on our year March 8 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Colleagues, any comments? I don't see any requests yet. Just give you a minute. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Mr. Clegg, I would like you to include a prorated million-dollar fund, which, in the budget that we approve on March 8, that might be three and a half months left in the fiscal year out of $1,350,000, and then roll forward. A fund to be in place to defray costs of habitat mitigation for as long as we don't have a habitat mitigation program, and really for any developer, commercial, residential, nonprofit, who gets caught in that. And then, I'd like to have you, something with that, delegate it to the Right Committee, maybe Budget and Finance, someone to work out the implementing language, you know, how do you apply, how do we implement this thing, and maybe they could get that done within three months or less, something like that, so we have one in place, but I'd like to make that request.
Any others? Councilmember Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions regarding an item listed here. There's a $300,000 allocation towards a shopping cart containment subsidy program. I know that there was a six-month window for retailers to be compliant. When did that? It feels like it was recent.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and this is a question I've been asked by some council members, and so I just investigated this, and it's in my next written report to council, but as of today, we reach our six-month timeframe in which shopping centers had time to get these systems in place. Last month, our team sent letters out reminding property owners of this new ordinance and reminding them of where they could request guidance or assistance. And so, moving forward beyond today, we actually are in the mode where we'll begin, you know, those further reminders and compliance of making sure folks have these systems in place.
Okay, and just to clarify, that letter indicated an incentive or subsidy program for retailers as well?
Correct.
Okay, and how many retailers, retail stores have requested funding?
We have not, yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. We have not received any formal applications. We've received a handful of inquiries, and our understanding from, because we did work with some of the vendors to try and, you know, understand their products and create awareness, we know there's been inquiries also to vendors, but we actually have not received a formal request as of today for the incentive program.
Okay, and if we allocate $300,000, how long will we set aside those funds before we roll them back into other uses or better uses?
Fair question. I would recommend that, you know, if we set it aside at mid-year, that we would still carry it forward beyond July 1 at a minimum, but I would think through next fiscal year, if those funds haven't been accessed by next fiscal year, I would argue that the need for the incentive, you know, has passed us.
Okay, thank you. I just wonder if we might want to reduce that amount and perhaps allocate dollars elsewhere if this fund is not going to be utilized, but if we have an expectation that it will be, I'm fine with it. I just wanted to offer that comment. With that, if there are no other council comments, I'm going to make a motion to receive and file.
You have a motion, please cast your votes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Thank you. I don't see any requests at this point, anybody? Councilmember Gray.
Just real quick, I am definitely a fan of our dear President Lincoln, who is actually the most popular president in U.S. history, and his birthday is on February the 12th. And what does that have to do with us? Well, it has a lot to do with us. He was an amazing leader, as I just got into some fun facts about him. Of course, we all know he was self-taught, became, he lost his mother at a young age. He was an accomplished wrestler. He won 299 matches out of 300. Who would have known that? And he lost five elections before he was ever a president. That is persistence. Those are quality character traits that caused him to be the leader that he was. Depression was his constant friend, they said. So, he was a man of compassion because he understood, and he led our country through the toughest times when the states were divided and slavery was accepted, and I thank God that he led this country so that slavery was abolished, our states have come back together, and we are a one republic. So, with that, what does it have to do with us today? Oh, he also believed in the women's right to vote, so that was a good thing. But, he wrote what's called the Tin Canots, and I found these years and years ago, and I have them hanging in my home office, and I gave a copy to all my colleagues tonight. But I just wanted to read them very quickly to you because I feel like they're so important and relevant today, almost 200 years later. "You cannot bring about prosperity by discouraging thrift. You cannot strengthen the weak by weakening the strong. You cannot help little men by tearing down big men. You cannot lift the wage earner by pulling down the wage payer. You cannot help the poor by destroying the rich. You cannot establish sound security on borrowed money. And you cannot further the brotherhood of man by inciting class hatred. You cannot keep out of trouble by spending more than you earn. You cannot build character and courage by destroying men's initiative and independence. And you cannot help men permanently by doing for them what they can and should do for themselves." As I read these again, I just pray that us as an elected body here in the city of Bakersfield can govern by the same wisdom that President Lincoln so thoughtfully penned, and I believe his words will continue to be relevant to this generation and to generations to come. So, I just wanted to give that tribute to our 16th president, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a referral regarding water conservation. We're blessed with a good year this year, but we live in a place that gets very little water, and I don't think in the past we've been as serious as we could be as far as water conservation. I read an article where Las Vegas doubled in size and population over a number of years and reduced the amount of water that they used by a large percentage. So, I would like staff to find out what they did, and I think Phoenix also conserves much better than what we do, and make a report to the Water Board on that and see what direction we might go. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Freeman.
I just wanted to add, and Abraham Lincoln wrote all his own speeches. Those speechwriters, Gettysburg Address, all of the great speeches, if you've read them, this guy, under candlelight at night after work, I guess, wrote them. Think of that versus our president's day, the sort of monumental intellect this man must have had, as you just marvel. He wrote every word himself, no staff, no anything, and I'm always so impressed that, I don't know, anyone could have written those, but he wrote them himself, and he's the president, he's like, he's a manager, he's not a poet, and this guy wrote the greatest addresses in American history, so something to think about.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I would like to make a couple of referrals. I was looking to figure out when it was that the city and this council approved $1 million for the Blue Zones project. It was only September 22 of 2022, so less than a full year, and they have been hard at work. In the month of January, they've already done three summits, one on the built environment, what the infrastructure looks like in our communities and the health of it, another on tobacco usage, specifically amongst our youth ages, and then also a third one on food insecurity and food availability for all in our community. So, I appreciate the work that they're doing. They are not skipping a beat, and really proud of that investment that the city has made. But, tonight, I hold in my hands a list of the policy recommendations that Blue Zones has discovered. At the top of it was a topic of discussion for this council last year. Number one is passing a retail license, a tobacco retail license, and I would like to make a referral tonight that we take a look, not only at that first recommendation, to adopt a tobacco retail license, but also to take a look at the other five or six recommendations that they've made in this packet, and refer that over to the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Committee. I secondly want to, I know he's not here anymore tonight, but want to thank Mr. Tillery for coming forward to talk about the challenges he faces as it relates to public safety. Thank goodness for the passage of Measure N back in 2018. I think the voters had some foresight into some of the challenges that we are facing, and at the top of, you know, concern in their minds was, you know, how quickly and the quality of those timely responses from our Bakersfield Police Department. And so, it has been several years since that passage, and I appreciate and applaud Greg Terry and the entire department on many of the efforts that they have made in staffing up our department during a great resignation, also, you know, adding additional equipment and the necessary tools that we need to meet the needs of our community. And so, tonight, I would like for us to, or I would like to make a referral to the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Committee, that we actually come together and we take a look at how we can strategically formulate a plan to reduce response times throughout our city to meet the demands of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. This morning, we had the pleasure of celebrating the expansion of the Rennett Lane Navigation Center. It's going to make a big difference in our ability to respond to the homeless needs. So, colleagues, thank you for being there. Partners, thank you so much, and staff, very much appreciate all of your efforts to make that happen. In March of 2022, the city of Bakersfield submitted a letter to support Senator Shannon Grove's legislation, SB 1042, which would have made human trafficking a serious and violent felony. Colleagues, we did that together. The bill did not pass in the last session. So, the senator has brought back the legislation again, and she's requested the city of Bakersfield to submit a letter of support for SB 14, which would include human trafficking in the list of crimes that are defined as serious and violent felonies, making the crime a strike under California's Three Strikes Law. So, she's requested that of us. I did send an individual letter of support to the senator's office, and tonight, we're just requesting staff to prepare a letter of support for council's consideration at the next meeting related to that.
Mayor Go, if I may?
Yes.
I believe that this item is very consistent with our legislative platform as established, so with this referral, I think it would be fair to direct staff to prepare that letter without further council action, inasmuch as it's consistent with our legislative platform.
All right. Thank you very much. Colleagues, I don't see any other requests. Thank you all for being here this evening, and we are adjourned at 5:00, 6:53. and we are adjourned at 5:00, 6:53.